Good morning, and if everyone could please take your seats. Thank you all, and welcome to the swearing in of our new city manager. At this time, I'd like to invite Jay Chapa and his lovely family to come forward to the front. His wife will be administering the oath of office for him.
Okay, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Jesus J. Chapa.
I, Jesus J. Chapa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of City Manager.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office.
Of the City Manager.
City of Fort Worth.
City of Fort Worth.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, uh, thank you all. It's truly an honor and privilege to stand here before you today as the city manager of Fort Worth, Texas. Of course, I want to thank Mayor Parker and the city council for the trust you've placed in me, and I'm excited to begin this journey with all of you. I want to congratulate and thank David Cook for the tremendous service that he's provided to the city and all the accomplishments he was able to achieve during his tenure run. I also want to give thanks to all my fellow city employees that have provided me with words of support and encouragement. Fort Worth is truly a city full of potential. It's a dynamic, diverse, and unique place with an identity that can't be duplicated. I came to this city over thirty years ago and haven't left because it's truly a special place. I've had the opportunity to see the resilience and passion of the community, and I'm inspired by the passion and dedication of its residents, businesses, and city employees. As I step into this role, I'm committed to listening, learning, and working with all to continue building a city where everyone can thrive. Our shared vision for Fort Worth's future must be built on transparency, pride in quality of service delivery by your city, and a deep reverence for mutual respect and collaboration. We'll all work to address these challenges ahead, embrace opportunities to for growth and to ensure that Fort Worth remains the city that people are proud to call home. I'm eager to engage with residents, businesses, not-for-profit organizations, and all stakeholders to continue improving city services. I'm looking forward to connecting with citizens truly motivated to finding solutions and not just finding fault, to ensure that Fort Worth is the city that wins for everyone and we move into the second quarter, as we move into the second quarter of the century. Finally, I want to finish by thanking my family and friends for the incredible support and encouragement they've given me, not only during this process, but throughout my journey to this point in life. To all my friends and acquaintances in the community, thanks for the lift you've provided. Thanks to my sisters, brothers, and in-laws for your encouragement. And of course, I give special thanks to my beautiful wife and our fantastic daughter Emmy, who's the pride of our life. For a guy from, uh, the youngest of six, from a small town in the Rio Grande Valley, whose parents didn't even make it to high school, but was lucky enough to have incredible modeling by his five older brothers and sisters, I'm incredibly humbled. I commit to you that I will give it all my all as I move through this endeavor and will strive to always make decisions that I believe are the best interest, are in the best interest of the city and the community. So to paraphrase the mayor, it's time, so let's go.
Mayor, I believe we have time for comments from council if there are any.
That's great, council. Any comments or questions? Anybody? No? You've got, go ahead. Councilmember Williams, please.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to Jay Chapa. This is a really historic moment in our city's, uh, city's life, and I'm just grateful for all that you do in leadership with our city and in partnership with the city council. Um, and I also just want to, um, just say that, um, you know, although I won't be here next go-round, my prayers will be with the city, and if there's anything that I can do over the next several years to be supportive of you, Jay, and to you, mayor and council, I know that I'm all in and my heart will always be for the city of Fort Worth. And then lastly, thank you, David, for your many years of service. This work is a relay, not a sprint. And this city is, as great as it is because of the marathon and the relay and the baton handing that this city ceremony does every so often. So, uh, thank you for your, your leadership and your impact will go down in this city's history, and it certainly has impacted, uh, many lives. So many blessings to you both. I look forward to this next chapter in our city, and may God bless both of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to Jay, I apologize for not being there in person, but congratulations to you. The city's in good hands. Thank you to your family for lending your services to the city and its residents. And again, a hearty thank you to David Cook for all your years of service and dedication, David, to the city of Fort Worth. Thank you.
Councilmember Vivins?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Jay. It's important that you know that I know you were made for this. You were built for this, and this is the time to execute. Out of a hundred and fifty-four applicants, Jay Chapa is the one who sailed to the cream of the crop. This is one of the most important votes I've ever taken to hire Jay Chapa. Jay Chapa is the one, for those of you in District Five, all those paved streets, security cameras, those were done with Jay's, Jay Chapa's guiding hand and supportive hand. From the moment we tore down that Dairy Queen, he was there. And so it is important that you know, for me, the city is in great hands. For those of you city employees who may have been frustrated because you saw things not happening, I can promise you, they will, they have been. To David, thanks for making the deal of a lifetime. Sixty-nine million on a building that was nearly a hundred and thirty million, you made that deal. Thank you. And now Jay gets to move your floor, your office, to a more appropriate full floor so that I don't walk in hearing you tell Denise, "I love you too." Because there was no privacy. But, you know, in closing, I reiterate, you all need to know Jay Chapa was made for this. He will serve us well, he will hear you, he will support you, and he will lead. That's all.
Thank you, Gina. Councilmember Nettles?
Yes, I'll be brief. Um, had a privilege to work with Jay Chapa, um, in his tenure before he left the first time. And I want to say that although we may not always agree on issues, but we are committed to supporting each other. And I'm committed to supporting you as the next city manager, looking to make sure we can govern this city, support our police department, our fire department, and all of our, uh, city initiatives that David has set forth and those that this council would bring forth. Uh, with the issues that are happening throughout our United States of America and at Austin, it's important that we take care of our citizens here in Fort Worth to make sure we improve in quality, equity, and life here. So I look forward to working with you, Jay Chapa. Welcome to the city of Fort Worth as our city manager.
Councilmember Crane?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Jay, I just want to say to you, I'm not sure if we should say "good morning," M-O-R-N, or M-O-U-R-N, but "good morning" and "thanks for being here." Really appreciate your leadership. We've worked together for a long period of time, and I'll echo what Mayor Pro Tem Vivin says. You were made for this job, and I'm really happy that we're celebrating this historic moment for Fort Worth today with Jay Chapa, and you've got an excellent family and glad you're bringing them all along, but congratulations again.
Thank you. Councilmember Beck?
Jay, I would wish you luck, but you don't need luck because you have hard work. So I look forward to working hard with you for the city of Fort Worth. Um, I wish you all the success as city manager because the success that you have is the success that the city of Fort Worth has, not just as an institution inside the walls of this building, but in our community as well. I look forward to seeing how you lead the city moving forward as, um, as we grow into one of the largest top-ten cities in the nation. I think you can do it. I know you can do it, and I'm excited to see how you do it, so good luck.
Councilmember Blaylock?
I'll be brief. Jay, welcome aboard. Thank you for being here. I think you're going to do great things for our city, and I, I look forward to working with you. Also want to say thank you to David Cook for your long-term excellence in the role. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Martinez?
Jay, just, you know, I support you, and I just want to congratulate you again. And in these incredibly difficult times, we're going to need someone strong there to support our entire community. So I look forward to working with you. And David, congratulations. I know you're not going away, so I look forward to seeing you around the city.
Thank you, council, and thank you for all of you for attending today and also your patience in staying at the back for our council meeting that will follow. Um, for those concerned, we're going to celebrate David Cook plenty, so don't worry. Um, in the coming, in coming week, we'll have celebration for community and for city staff. Um, to Jay, I think you understand this fully. I've seen you work at it, but leadership is earned. It's not something you're given, and I think that's why so many of us are so excited to watch him embark on the next chapter for the city of Fort Worth. The citizens deserve the very best CEO in their city, and I have full confidence that we have made a very consequential vote and moved the city of Fort Worth forward to build on the momentum that David Cook has created for the last ten and a half years. I also think you've selected a city manager with heart for this community, which is unique, right? These are very difficult jobs where you do a national search and people will move across the country to lead a large city. And as I stated many times over during the search process, it was incredibly fortunate for us in the city of Fort Worth, the very best city manager in the country already lived in the city of Fort Worth and just happened to have over twenty-five years of experience right here in these walls. And there are too many accolades to count. So now we get to do the next chapter, Jay, of, of building and moving forward and making sure the city of Fort Worth is truly the very best place to live, work, raise a family, and build a business. And you have the city of Fort Worth employees that really make all that happen on behalf of their residents. So God bless each of you. Thank you so much, and let's keep working alongside Jay and the rest of the city to make this city even better than it already is today. Thank you. So now we'll move into the city council meeting. Jeanette, the floor is yours, and we'll call us to order.
Today's invocation will be by Pastor Dietra Hicks from True Praise Spiritual Church. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Almighty God, in the name of Jesus, Father, we asking you to remember Fort Worth, Texas today, God. Father, we asking you to remember our mayor, Matty Parker, and all the councilmen and women that served this great city. Father, we need your help in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, you said for us to remember the poor, the widow, and the orphan, and we're going to do that. Father, we asking you to remember every deputy, every sheriff, every marshal, every bailiff. Father, we on down to the maintenance people, God. Father, we asking you to bless us in a mighty way, God, that we'll think about what it is that we need to do through you, God. Father, God, give us instruction and give us direction, God, in the way that we should go in this city, God. And Father, I'm asking you to penetrate our hearts and our minds, God, and lead every leader in this city to lead this city well, God. In the mighty name of Jesus, Father, I thank you for this congregation that is here today, God. Father, God, whatever ails them or, or they're going through, even in the council, Father, I'm asking you to bless their homes, bless their children, bless their wives, bless their husbands, God. In the mighty name of Jesus, Father, no weapon formed against us, it will not prosper. And every tongue that rises against us in judgment, it shall be condemned. Father, we thanking you for the new city manager, God. Father, God, lead him the way you have always lead him. And Father, I'm thanking you in advance for a great city and a great meeting. In Jesus' mighty name we pray, thank God. Amen.
We will begin with special presentations. We have three special presentations today, and we will begin with a presentation of a resolution from Representative David Cook to the new city manager, Jay Chapa.
Thank you, Jeanette. I think Daryl Perez is here on behalf of Representative Cook, who I think is detained in Austin, correct? Thank you, Mr. Perez. And Jay, if you want to join him there at the podium?
Congratulations. Mayor and council and city staff and citizens of Fort Worth, it's an honor to be here to present this resolution recognizing a truly historic and well-deserved moment for the city of Fort Worth today. We celebrate the appointment of Jesus J. Chapa as the new city manager of Fort Worth, marking a significant milestone as he becomes the first Hispanic city manager for the twelfth-largest city in the United States. Jay Chapa's nearly three decades of dedicated public service have left an indelible mark on this community. From his leadership as deputy city manager to his transformative work in economic development, finance, and housing, he has consistently demonstrated his commitment to the progress and prosperity of Fort Worth. His professional expertise is matched by his generosity of spirit, serving on numerous boards and contributing his talents to organizations that enrich this city and beyond. Jay's achievements are a source of pride, not just for Fort Worth, but for the entire state of Texas. His vision, skill, and steadfast dedication to public service will no doubt guide this city into an even brighter future. On behalf of the state of Texas, it is my great privilege to congratulate Jay Chapa on this momentous appointment and wish him every success as he embarks on this new chapter of leadership. Fort Worth is in excellent hands. Now, therefore, be resolved that Jay Chapa be congratulated on his appointment as city manager of Fort Worth and that he be extended sincere best wishes for a successful tenure on behalf of David Cook, State Representative for House District Ninety-Six. Congratulations.
Next will be a recognition for the Fort Worth Museum of Science and History's seventy-fifth anniversary.
Good morning. We are here to celebrate the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Fort Worth Museum of Science and History and Museum School, and I know we have Dr. Fadden here and some board members. If you want to bring your team up and come stand with me? Uh, whereas, the Fort Worth Museum of Science and History's Museum School was established in nineteen forty-nine as the Frisky and Blossom Club, later becoming the first accredited and licensed museum school in the United States. And whereas, the museum story began in nineteen thirty-nine when the Fort Worth Administrative Women and Education Council envisioned creating a children's museum, which laid the foundation for museum school, an innovative approach to science and history education for young children. And whereas, this program was first in Texas and was one of the first in the nation to recognize that children as young as three have the capacity to engage meaningfully with science and natural history. And whereas, at the heart of museum school success is the integration of real-world objects, expertise, and passionate staff dedicated to enriching children's learning. In addition, the school curriculum incorporates natural land, physical sciences, history, anthropology, art, and literature, offering a comprehensive and engaging education. And whereas, since its founding, Museum School has nurtured the curiosity of more than two-hundred thousand children, fostering a deep connection to science, history, and culture in generations of Fort Worth families. And whereas, today, Museum School remains as a national model for informal science education, and its influence continues to ripple throughout Fort Worth and beyond. With seventy-five years of innovation, Museum School celebrates not only its legacy, but also its bright future, continuing to inspire and educate young minds for generations to come. Now therefore, the city of Fort Worth does hereby proclaim February twenty-twenty-five as Museum School Month in the city of Fort Worth. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for this honor, and I just want to introduce our board chair, Marian Ald, a long-term board member, David Nollet, and the person who has the great privilege of overseeing the museum school, Amber, who is a graduate, and I know there are a few others in the room. Um, and so Amber heads up the entire education program. We just want to thank you. Um, one of the things that I love most about when I came here eighteen months ago is it was a grassroots effort to start this school and to really inspire, you said, generations of Fort Worthians. So it's our privilege to continue that legacy. Thank you.
Regina, before you sit down, I just want to thank Councilwoman Hill for putting this together. And as a attendee forty-something years ago in the museum school, where I learned my planets when Pluto was still a planet, I want to say thank you for inspiring generations and appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
Okay, next up is recognition to Bob and Mona Bienski for outstanding community service. Um, I know you have a huge group with you, and I'd like to invite all of your friends and colleagues up here. Um, Commander from the West Division, Commander Heisey, will also join us. I have Sergeant Starry, Sergeant Owen, our NPOs, Jansen, McQuinn, Bryant, and then our citizens of patrol that also are joining you today. Um, I wanted to recognize them, and they're welcome to come down as well. Uh, Mike and Kathy Cole, Gary Hogan, Cindy McCoy, Del Stone Cypher, Lori Bienski, Vaughn, Kristy Bienski-Viel, Ashley Bienski, Mike Ernie, and then I believe your sister came in town from Bryan, Texas. She's also here, Carol Towns. Assistant Chief Ulveridge, Swerengen, and Wheeler, if y'all are available to come down too. Thank you. Okay. First of all, before we get started, um, thank you so much for your service. I did not know that you also, um, are also the McGruff character on occasion, so it was fun to see those pictures. That's pretty amazing. But first of all, thank you for taking time to do this, and it's meaningful to our police department, to our citizens, and you really do it out of the goodness of your heart, and we're very grateful for that. and we're very grateful for that. I'm going to read this, so bear with me. Bob and Mona Bienski have been citizens on patrol, captain for the West Point Chapel Creek area since 2009. During his time as patrol captain, Bob was named the West Division Patroler of the Year. Since 2023, Bob has taken on the role of McGruff the Crime Dog. Bob, along with his wife, Ann Handler, Mona, has participated in numerous school and special events, including Shop with a Cop and many National Night Out appearances promoting crime prevention and McGruff the Crime Dog. On October 1st, 2024, Bob, in full McGruff costume, and Mona stopped by several National Night Out events within the West Division in 90-degree heat, showcasing their dedication to building a stronger, safer city. Together, Bob and Mona continue to work tirelessly to promote crime prevention within their community and all of Fort Worth, presented on the 28th day of January 2025. Thank you so much for your service. Counsel, before we move to the rest of the agenda, I wanted to take a moment to recognize some students that are here with us today at City Council. I believe we have Dunbar High School here, as well as Young Men's Leadership Academy. If you would please stand, if you're here on behalf of your school, we'd love to recognize you. Very much for taking the time to be with you today.
Mayor, if I might, I want to thank you all for making the trek to downtown Fort Worth from Stop 6, Texas. And I found out that band teachers still throw chairs. That's what I had to grow up with, okay? And what you need to know is the students are smarter because now they know to say, don't throw the chair. But to YMLA, Young Men's Leadership Academy, I am so proud of you, but the distinguished ladies have promised me a shirt. So I don't know what I'm going to get from you guys other than security, like you always do. But thank you all for being here. And I've told you before you walked in the room, you were going to see history today. In all the years of Fort Worth, Texas, we have never had a Hispanic city manager. It is proof that hard work pays off, and I'm just so glad that you got a chance to see history made today. May you never forget it. Thank you for being here.
And I didn't mean to create more high school rivalry. I think Eastern Hills High School is also here.
Where is Eastern Hills?
Is Eastern Hills here? Yep, sorry about that, guys. Stand up.
Here, I'm glad you said that the bus hadn't arrived.
I would have been in big trouble if I had done that. Yes. Thank you to Jeanette for making me aware. Glad y'all are here.
Thank you all for being here. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, there you go. Great. Eastern Hills Elementary, you have kids here too. Where are they? Awesome.
One question. Did everybody get a molly pen? If you didn't, find Michelle. Michelle, raise your hand. If you didn't get a molly pen, make sure you don't leave here without one. And thank you all for coming and bringing joy to my heart to see so many students at City Council today. Thank you so much.
Next will be items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda.
We have one item to be withdrawn, MNC 25-0063.
Items to be continued or withdrawn by staff?
We have none.
Mayor, I believe that gets us to consent agenda.
Thank you, Jeanette. We have Adrian Smith, followed by Chris Wood.
Adrian Smith, District 6. I am one with the people, and the people are the power for change. Speaking to you this morning, Council Item 25-0066. When they go low, you go high. So this particular agenda item, for those who are following along, it'll be on page 3 of 12, Item Number 2. And this is for the purchase of motor and aviation fuel-related services for all city departments. This particular request was made by the property management department who approached the purchasing division. Now, the type of fuels we are considering are Jet A diesel fuels, alternative fuels, non-entainment area to supply operated vehicles and equipment unleaded in diesel fuels, et cetera. You get it. It's about fuel purchase. But I'm not here to talk about the fuel purchase. I'm here to talk about the cost that it's going to be costing we, the taxpayers. So in this particular agenda, it says there are no guarantees were made that a specific amount of these funds would be purchased. Staff certifies that the recommended vendors' bids meet specification. There were 11 bidders five were chosen. Now, it states that the combined annual amount allowed under these non-exclusive agreements for the first year of the initial term would be $15 million. But there's a however part. The actual amount used would be based on the need of the department and available budget. So regarding the various renewal options, which are in the millions of dollars, one question I have of this council and mayor. What's expected to change regarding the product or services that will be provided as it relates to this agenda item other than what is going to cost we, the taxpayers? Again, the renewal options are in the millions of dollars. There are five potential renewal options. However, there is what I like to call the nuclear option, where these five renewal options can be bypassed. And the nuclear option for the first 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 year, it encompasses $30,170,358 if we bypass those renewals and just hit the nuclear button and just drop the money in that first year. The second year, it states at an amount of $34,695,911 if we hit the nuclear option for the second year. So again, Mayor, these renewal options, why all these amounts in the millions of dollars if the services and the products are not changing? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Wood.
My name is Chris Wood, and I am from District 9. I'm here to support the agenda item for the acceptance of funds to reduce poverty. Ending poverty is a cornerstone for building a successful and thriving community. I have witnessed the profound impact of poverty, spending about four years in areas of extremely low income. I was shocked and saddened by the lengths to which people go to just to survive, like having a friend get shot over a small amount of money, someone pulling out a knife just to get a good spot in line to receive food, and a friend threatening to physically harm someone over a stolen blanket. Eradicating poverty will help prevent people from resorting to desperate acts to make it through to another day. In 2016, I became disabled. I was approved for disability benefits. And while I am grateful for the assistance, the monthly amount I receive places me in the low-income category. Living on a lower income is a constant battle, a balancing act between paying bills and purchasing necessities. The struggle to secure healthy food can be daunting. Food banks, while a vital resource, often lack the capacity to provide sufficient quantities of nutritious foods such as fresh fruits and vegetables. Access to medical care is a critical issue for those living in poverty. I have personally experienced the frustration and helplessness of being turned away by an urgent medical care center simply because they did not accept Medicare. Fortunately, I have the support of my middle-class family who lend a helping hand in times of need. Their assistance is a lifeline, allowing me to navigate the challenges of being poor. However, many individuals facing poverty do not have the safety net of family support. If I struggle so much as a low-income person with the help of middle-class family members, I can only imagine the insurmountable difficulties faced by those who are entirely on their own. The acceptance of federal funds to combat poverty is a crucial step towards addressing these issues. These funds have the potential to create significant and lasting changes in our community. By addressing the root causes of poverty and providing the necessary resources for individuals to thrive, we can create a more prosperous and equitable society for everyone. Thank you for considering my testimony.
Counsel, that's the conclusion of our speakers. I can entertain a motion on the consent agenda. A motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, please vote. Carlos was a yes too, thank you. And Jared? Motion approves.
Next item will be MNC 25-0063.
I asked for it to be pulled off, pulled off, Mayor.
Go ahead. Sorry, it's just delayed on the screen. I was making sure we don't have speakers or anything. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I just, Mayor, thanks and counsel for, I wanted to pull this off just because I think it deserves a shout out to Paige Charbonneau and her team at LBT Rise. It's a true public-private partnership that's making change in Las Vegas Trail area. She does it, as you see, it's $170,000 a year. She runs that community center and provides services to that area. So I just want to take a second to say thank you to her and her team for making a definite change in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crane. Got a motion and a second, counsel? Please vote.
Mayor, we'll need to do it by a vote.
Okay, no problem. Counsel, all in favor, say aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Next will be upcoming and recent events and recognition of citizens, approval of ceremonial travel if needed.
That sounds good. I'm not sure which councilmembers may have items this afternoon, evening, morning, whatever I'm in. Councilmember Larsdorf, do you have anything? You have to tell, I'm riding blind here, so I don't know. Anybody? Nope? Everybody's good? Councilmember Beck and then DeMartinez?
And Councilmember Flores has.
Councilmember Flores.
Okay, am I up first, Mayor? Am I on? Hello?
You're on.
I'm on, okay.
Thanks. Okay. Great. I have one slide, if you can put it up, please. Okay, I had a great virtual meeting with a couple of Forest Ridge High School students in District 2. Kathy and Maureen, they worked together to raise awareness about insomnia and how that can affect your health and how important sleep is, you know, to all, you know, our well-being. So I'm guilty of that. I stay up pretty late and often don't get good amounts of sleep. So it was a very informative meeting that I had with them. And I want to thank Councilmember Larsdorf for connecting us. Next, a couple of announcements. The North Triathletic Center is hosting its very first Valentine's Dance. And this is a special one because it's inviting individuals with special needs of all ages. On Saturday, February 15, from 12 to 3, at 29:15 Roosevelt Avenue, Police RSPB, to Angela Tobias. That's angela.tobias@fortworthtexas.gov. And then the second announcement, All Saints Catholic Church is holding its Valentine's Day Dance on February 14 from 6 to 12. Please contact All Saints Catholic Church for more details about that at 817-626-3055. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flores. Councilmember Beck, I think you're up next. If I'm wrong, I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. Look at that. Larsdorf, you're next.
I thought you were asking about the ceremonial travel. I was like, that sounds fun, but no.
You don't get to go anywhere?
Yeah, they don't let me.
Marine Corps lets you go to some really exciting places, I hear.
Yeah, I'm still P&amp;G'd for many, many places, so. Okay, if we can pull that, thank you. All right, next slide. All right, first, we had our first responders appreciation. I just want to say thank you to Black Rifle for holding that up in North Fort Worth. Huge military and first responder supporter. So we had fire out there, police, MedStar out there getting some free coffee, not just from Black Rifle, but from residents that come in. They ask, would you like to buy a cup for first responder? If you do, then that goes to them. So shout out to Black Rifle for doing that. Next slide. We had a construction coming, a meeting, Hillside Community Church. It's actually a really good meet because it's about a $26 million project to Wyden Ray White. The room was packed, which is interesting because that night, there was actually a very spicy meeting over at Keller ISD with their school board. Follow that if you have plenty of popcorn. But this room is packed because this is going to impact so many residents over there, and they had their concerns. And I just want to say thank you to the city staff for showing up and showing out that night. Able to answer a lot of questions, alleviate a lot of fears. Usually when there's anger, it's just due to the unknowns. So I want to thank you, the staff, for really making a difference there and not just using engineering speak because I was, I was lost with a lot of it. But these engineers were able to break it down to where even a Marine could understand it and alleviate a lot of those fears of those residents. That neighborhood was really built out before it was annexed, so there's a lot of roads without curb and gutter, and a lot of fences are used as targets for vehicles. So I think that's going to improve safety a lot down this road, especially for our high schoolers who have to walk to school, who didn't have a sidewalk. This will change for them, so thank you for that. Next slide. Shout out to the Foster Ridge High Panthers. They just won fourth place in the coed division at the national competition. And not on here is also Timberview Middle School Hawk Band, who was named a recipient of the 2025 Music for All Advocacy and Action Award, which was, they were one of only six groups nationwide to earn that award. And then Foster Ridge High School, their DECA students, 46 students are going to be going to the State Career Development Conference this March in Dallas. So a lot of Keller ISD students who fall in Fort Worth are doing amazing things and super proud of them. Last is our homelessness summit that we have coming up in February. Thank you to the city staff for helping us put this one together. I have a lot of concerns in District 4 and what we're seeing up there. And this, I think this meeting is going to be a little bit different than most. It's not just going to be presentations given and a lot of slideshows. It's going to be a lot of questions and answers directly from the community. So again, thank you to the staff for helping us put this together and answer a lot of very important questions as we look to alleviate a lot of the concerns that we're seeing up north. And that's it.
Thanks, Charlie. Councilmember Beck?
Great, first slide. Last week, we, last Thursday, I was joined by my staff members and several District 9 NPOs and participated in the point-in-time count. If you have never done that, I would highly encourage you to do it next year. It's really a great way to connect with members of our community you probably pass by every day. And it really humbles you when you see how some of these folks in Fort Worth are living. So it really, and it helps us here on council understand the enormity of the problem that we're trying to tackle when it comes to homelessness. Next slide. All right, on Saturday, there was a, it was a big day in Fairmount. We unveiled a Texas Historical Marker dedication for the Boykin House in honor of Claudia Boykin, who was a leader here in Fort Worth in the suffragette movement. She also was one of the first fundraisers for the Fort Worth Women and Babies Hospital, which would later become Cook Children's. And she was the first woman elected as a delegate to a state party convention. And so it was really a cool day to be able to learn a little bit more about Fort Worth's history. And it's on Adams, if you are interested in driving by and taking a look. Next slide.
Okay, the Cowtown Marathon is coming up. And for those of you non-runners, that means street closures. So be on the lookout for communications from my office and the city of Fort Worth so that you can best plan for that weekend and how to move about the city. Next slide. Okay, this is a photograph from an event that happened several months ago. But tonight, we will be accepting, deeding over this particular building from, not tonight, today, from the Fort Worth Zoo. And so I wanted to share a photograph of that particular building ahead of that vote. It's really an expansion of the Fort Worth Zoo's ability to educate our community. And so big, big thank you to them for their partnership and making our zoo what I think, what I know is the best zoo in the country. And that's it.
All right, so, okay, everyone is invited to the District 11 Town Hall. It's taking place on Saturday, February 22, at UTAR, the UTA Research Institute in East Fort Worth. It's going to be from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. We're going to hear from, we're going to ask PD, Hope Team, Transportation Co. to do presentations, Neighborhood Services as well. We also have other departments there for you to visit with for Q and A. Next slide. And District 11 is partnering with District 5. We're going to be hosting an event in partnership with Frost Bank for our Frost Bank Home Event. So that's going to take place on March 22, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Eastern Hills High School. So come hear about getting a home loan, home care and maintenance information. Come here from the City of Fort Worth departments and more. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Mayor, I believe that concludes all of the...
Thank you.
And there are no speakers on the non-consent agenda items, so we will move into our resolutions, with the first one being 25-4836.
Got a motion and a second, Counsel. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Next is 25-4858.
Motion and a second, Counsel. Please vote.
Next is 25-4861.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Next is MNC 25-0072, with report by Kelly Baggett, City Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. We are here today to hold a public hearing regarding the proposal to adopt an ordinance to dissolve tax increment reinvestment zone number 10, also known as TIRS 10. TIRS 10 was created in the mid-2000s pursuant to a master economic development agreement between the city, Tarrant County, the Lone Star Local Government Corporation, and Cabela's Retail, to support the construction of public improvements and a publicly owned exhibition and recreation space associated with the Cabela's store development near Interstate 35 West and State Highway 170. The zone is scheduled to expire the end of 2025, but it has no outstanding or pending obligations or commitments now. The bonds have been incurred and been satisfied. Therefore, early termination of the zone is recommended. In compliance with state law, this hearing provides an opportunity for the public to address a proposed dissolution of TIRS 10 and its board. Following receipt of any public comments, staff recommends closing the public hearing and approving the MNC and ordinance to terminate the zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion or questions? If not, entertain a motion.
We move to approve.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Next is MNC 25-0081, with staff report by Sharon Berkeley.
Morning, Mayor Parker, members of the City Council. I'm Sharon Berkeley, Community Development Manager with the Neighborhood Services Department. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments regarding the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery CDBGDR Action Plan substantial amendment. The initial CDBGDR action plan was approved by City Council on February 14, 2023, and approved by HUD on May 8, 2023. Since that time, staff has been working on meeting additional requirements by HUD to move towards program implementation. This included submitting an implementation budget, staffing, updating needs assessment, and revising the budget. All of these updates and revisions are reflected in this amended plan submitted to the council for approval. Amendments included the following: updating the budget to include funding for planning activities, eliminating funding for infrastructure activities, as the needs have been met, increasing funds for mitigation to increase the city's resilience against future events, establishing program details for the single-family homeowner repair and rehabilitation program, establishing program details for the multifamily affordable housing program, and allocating program delivery costs for staff implementing the program. The substantial amendment to this plan specifies how HUD grant funds will be used in the period of performance from January 31, 2024 to January 30, 2030. The total amount of grant funds allocated to the program is $27,472,000. The budget includes the following five areas: administration, planning, mitigation, single-family housing rehabilitation, and multifamily affordable housing. The overall purpose of these funds is to assist low-income households and neighborhoods impacted by winter storm Yuri. Recommendations for this plan, plan's funding allocations were developed with the assistance of the Community Development Council, the city's advisory board for use of these grant funds. This public hearing follows a 30-day comment period on the CDBGDR Action Plan substantial amendment, which ran from Monday, December 23 until Friday, January 24. The substantial amendment was also posted on the city's website. For public review and copies were distributed to two regional city libraries, as well as made available in the Neighborhood Services Administrative Office. Staff is requesting that, following any additional comments received today, this public hearing be closed and the MNC be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a motion, Counsel, and a second. Any other discussion? Councilmember Bibbins.
While I will be supporting this motion, I think it's important that staff make haste to get with city legal and all other entities involved in our grant applications because of the Trump administration's directive to halt grants such as this. Even though we have a HUD secretary who is a Texan, we need to keep our part rolling, but just be aware that we do need to pay very close attention to what's happening there. And so, those are my comments.
Thank you, Counsel. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please vote. Is it stuck again? That's okay. Counsel, if I can get a voice-in-hand vote, all in favor, say aye. Any nays? Motion carries. The only person I think is maybe absent on that one is Councilmember Williams. I did not see him on screen.
Next item will be MNC 25-0065.
Counsel, any other discussion? We may be voice vote again. All in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0079.
Motion and a second, Counsel. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Motion carries. I had Jared and Chris both on that one.
Next will be MNC 25-0085.
Got a motion and a second, Counsel. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Beck? It's not working, sorry. Technical difficulties.
We're on. Okay. I just want to thank both the 440 and city management for so quickly coming to agreement on this negotiation. It's so important as we bring MedStar into the fold. So, big hats off to everybody for working hard and getting this done. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beck. Any other discussion, Counsel? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0095.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, Counsel. Any discussion? If not, please vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Mayor, that concludes all of the action items for today.
Thank you so much. Counsel, this is a good one. I want Beth Ellis to come down here on the podium. Not thrilled with me. I understand that. So, for those of you that don't know Beth Ellis, you might live under a rock, but Beth has been with the city of Fort Worth for 28 years, which is crazy. Have you ever heard the adage, "You know where the bodies are buried"? That is Beth Ellis. I am her fourth mayor to serve as the scheduler for the mayor's office. There is no more difficult job, I can assure you, than keeping all the plates spinning. Beth, you're family. We're just so proud of you. I would be sad if I weren't just excited for you and your beautiful family. She's earned this in so many ways. She's a mom to so many people in this room. I think we can all agree to that. And importantly, she still has her sanity somehow intact, which is truly remarkable. She's a mother, a counselor, a grandmother, and so many things. And so this is not goodbye. This is thank you, truly. And we can't wait to see what the next chapter looks like. I know we'll involve a little more Nana to Lane, for sure. And you should also know that her son, Josh, is a Fort Worth police officer, so that lineage runs deep here in the city of Fort Worth. So, on behalf of myself and every mayor that has been in this office, thank you and we love you. Counsel, meeting is technically adjourned, but if anybody would stay put, we're going to take a picture with Beth. And Beth, you want to say something? She probably doesn't, but please, no. She, she's, thank you. Okay. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take pictures. Thank you.